The regular meeting of the Southern Shores Town Council for June 20th, 2017 is now in session. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Constitution of our liberty and individual, so that we can do justice for all.
Thank you. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, are there any amendments to the agenda? Otherwise, I have motion to approve the agenda.
So no.
Second.
Have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's been approved, thank you. Counsel, a motion to approve the consent agenda which includes the minutes of May the 16th and June the 6th. A resolution to, for an MOU update for law enforcement, please, please David Cole, and also set a public hearing for July the 5th, 2017, a regular meeting to discuss the capital infrastructure improvements.
I'd like to amend that, sir. The public hearing, I'd like to move that we move the July 5th meeting to July 11th, the next Tuesday, instead of that Wednesday after a holiday. Most people will be out of town and cancel the last meeting in July, so we would have the meeting on the 11th and the public hearing on the 11th, which is the next Tuesday after the 4th.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second it, I agree.
Any discussion?
I thought there was something in a provision we had to, our meetings move if there was a holiday or move to the next day.
We do.
We did move to the next day.
It moved to the next day. It's on July 5th on Wednesday.
Instead of the 5th, doing, you know, it wouldn't be the, instead of the 4th, no, we move one day forward, not a week forward.
Right, we moved it to the 5th, which is, which is a Wednesday.
Yeah, which that's what it would be.
That's where it would be, and Gary's motion is to move it to the following Tuesday.
And I, I agree with him because you've got a public hearing on that agenda, and if a lot of people are out of town because of vacation and so forth, and people coming into town that are, yes, won't have good attendance.
Probably stay up at all. Thank you, Fred.
And I'll just, I support Gary's amendment. I'm also in, in my council members' comments, just to give you the heads up, I'm going to bring up a motion that now that we're through the budget process, summer's coming upon us, I'm going to make a motion that we cancel the mid-month meeting going forward here, and if we need special meetings, we, we call them. So, but I just, before we voted on, I want to make sure that, that was out there.
Any, any, I'm sorry, what was your next question, Leo?
My next question was Chris Anderson's, my next question.
Okay, thank you.
And Gary did that, I think Gary's motion was also to-
To cancel the July, uh, second meeting.
I can hear that.
And cancel the second.
So we have a motion on the floor that to, to approve the, the consent agenda with, with the change amendment to set a public hearing for July the 11th, is it? What day is the following Tuesday?
The 11th, the 4th on the-
4th is on Tuesday.
Tuesday, so add seven.
Right.
Is that, is that a typical, would that be the night meeting, as we're assuming?
Yeah, evening meeting.
So kind of for the meeting.
All in favor of that? Saying goodbye by saying aye. Aye. I am unopposed. The motion's made, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, what part of that motion is also to cancel the July 13th meeting?
Right.
Yes.
As part of that motion, we understood that here, it is part of us to cancel the July 18th meeting.
18th meeting. Thank you, Peter. Everybody understand that? We haven't got to vote again, have we?
Nope.
Thank you, all right. At this time, a general public comment is opened. Anyone signed up to speak?
I'm just-
Thanks, Sheila. Bonnie, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that was good.
This is from public comment number two, unless, Al, did you intend to sign up to number two, not number one?
Number two.
Okay, yeah, no input, first.
Good morning, Ken.
Good morning.
Ken Wilson with CBI, here to speak to us this morning about our, our segment of the Beach Nursery Project.
Well, you guys couldn't have picked a better day to pull me off the beach and have me come in here, so I appreciate, appreciate your time, and it was good. Yeah, I'm just going to go through a, a couple of project details that are more of a review, show you some construction photos, give you a kind of a flavor of what to expect in the coming months, talk a little bit about schedule, and I've got questions there at the end, but, you know, it's a small, small group today, so just jump in if you've got some questions. This is the project overview, let's see, is there a way to point it? Is there-
Use your mouse.
Oh, okay. It's all right, I can use it. I can see a little mouse pad here. All right. So we've got the Southern Shores Project, obviously, here, just situated with the other projects. They're currently working up in the town of Duck right now, probably be finished up with that in the next week or two. One of the dredges is actually supposed to be pulled off of the Duck Project in the next couple of days. It'll start pumping up here in the northern part of Kill Devil Hills, and then a few weeks later, they'll start filling in the rest of Kill Devil Hills, and I'll get into when we expect them up in Southern Shores towards the end. The borrow area is about 10 miles offshore, it's directly offshore, the, about the center of the Kill Devil Hills Project, pretty much right off of the Wright Memorial Monument, it's about six or seven miles offshore there. This is the permitted construction overlay, the plan view, couple of things to point out here, we'll be transitioning into the Southern Shores Project right here at the town line. What we call the main fill goes down here to Ocean View Loop Road, this is what we call Station Negative 15 Plus 00, basically means this is 1,500 feet long, this stretch of where the main fill is, and then it goes into about 1,000-foot taper north of Ocean View Loop. So here's a couple of shots of what it looked like back in January of 2017, a lot of erosional scarping there, believe some of the property owners had put in some fill, this is further toward, towards the northern part of the Pelican Watch area. This is a shot from the pier about two weeks ago, so you can see some of, some of the sand is kind of at, at a more natural angle of repose up here, some of the scarping has, has subsided, and, and, you know, some of this dry sand has kind of settled in here, as you get some of these, these calmer summer days. I'm going to show you some cross-sections in the next couple of slides, but one thing I wanted to point out here is that, so for the, I don't know if any of you have seen the Duck Project, or some of the pictures, or what have you, but basically, there's a large-scale dune that's constructed in front of the existing dune, and then there's a flat berm at, at plus-six-foot elevation that goes out from there. The Southern Shores Project won't have that constructed berm, but what we're looking at is basically, it will tie in somewhere above where this wet, wet, this, this wet-dry line is, probably somewhere halfway between the dune and that wet-dry line, basically wherever that six-foot contour is, it will tie in there, and it'll move offshore, they'll basically create somewhere between a 60 and an 80-foot wide berm at six-foot elevation, and then when they get 60 to 80-foot wide, it'll slope down to kind of a, a one-on-15 slope, and we'd expect some of that sand to pull back over the first coming months as the fill equilibrates. So the first cross-section I want to show you is at the Station Minus 10 Plus 00, just show it on the plan view there, so you got an idea of, of where we're looking at. There's a couple of different things going on here, so let's take these cross-sections one, one at a time. The first thing I want to highlight is this blue line that I've just, just highlighted on the screen, that's what the profile looked like back when we surveyed the beach in May of 2015, is that, that brighter blue line. The, the black line that's, that's landward of that, that's shown a little bit darker in this, this cross-section here, that's the survey they just conducted about two weeks ago. So basically, what we're looking at is the difference between those two lines, what's highlighted in red here, that's all the erosion that's happened since that survey was done in May of 2015. That's the volume that's been lost off of that profile there. So, you know, what, what's, you know, what's been talked about anecdotally by a lot of property owners, we can actually see and quantify here, here at this plus-six-foot contour, we've probably lost somewhere around 80 feet of beach, same thing up here, as you get to the toe of the dune, probably lost somewhere around 80 feet of beach, same is, is true roughly down here at the, at the zero or the, the water line, lost about 80 feet of beach. So what we're proposing to do is to basically fill underneath of this red template, this flat portion of the template is what I was referring to, that 60 to 80-foot wide dry beach at a six-foot elevation, but what you can see here is, if you look at this, this darker black line, basically, what's caused a good deal of that erosion offshore is that there's this, there's basically this hole out there in eight to 10 feet of water, and this, this beach fill project is basically going to fill, fill that hole out there, and what we would expect is that some of this sand is going to slough offshore and kind of fill the gap out here in the offshore portion of the profile, and should reestablish sort of that condition of back in, in 2015 and earlier, where you had a wider dry beach. We'd expect some of that dry beach to, to get wind-blown if they put up some sand fencing in that area, should catch some of that dune and, or some of that sand and reestablish some of that dune. But the, the cross-sections, I've got another one here, that's kind of in the middle of Pelican Watch, again, you see that big hole out there, that this, this beach fill that they're going to, that will be placing out there is basically going to fill that gap, and should allow that, that, should, should really slow down some of that erosion, that hotspot erosion that we've seen over the last year or so. These are some construction photos, so this is what the staging area looked like up in Duck just prior to construction starting. You've got sort of these, these, these boxes, which is where some of the surveys are operate, surveyors are operating out of, the engineers are operating out of, you've got some pipe here stockpiled, some of the heavy construction equipment, and then this, this tripod thing on wheels, it's similar to the crab that the, the field research facility uses, it's basically a tool that they use to survey out, what they do is they have a, a land surveyor survey from the dune out to the water line to, to, to measure the, excuse me, to measure the elevations of the, the beach prior to the, prior to the project going in, and then they use this crab, they can roll it out along the water line, they can roll it out to about 15 feet of water, and they survey the offshore portion. They do that before the sand is placed and after the sand is placed, and when you compare those two surveys, that's how you measure the actual quantity of sand that, that the contractor will be eligible for, for pay for. So this is day one, in the morning, May 24th. What you see going on here is the, the sub-line, the, the pipeline that's coming on from shore, from the dredge, they're basically discharging directly towards the beach, the sand is falling out of suspension, it's a mix of sand and water, it's about 20% sand, about 80% water, but the grain size of the sand and the amount of fines in there, the, the sand is settling out really well. So that sand falls out of suspension pretty quickly, and then these bulldozers just start stacking the material up. You can see this is a little, this is the same day, a little bit later in the day, they've been able to establish that dune. One thing is interesting, you, you look at that dune, and you can see a big color contrast between that wet sand that they're pushing up in that dune and the existing dune, but even on the same day, or the, the very next day, you can see how the, once that sand has dried out and it's bleached a little bit in the sun, it blends in pretty well. So here, they've established that construction dune, they're still building what they call the pad, so they're building an area where they can work on, a dry area they can work on, and then they start moving laterally down the beach. You can see that they've moved the pipeline now, the pipe is now directed offshore, so they're trying to build up this offshore portion of the template. Here's a little bit later on that same day, again, they're widening that dry sand beach, and by day three, they've basically constructed the full template along maybe 100 or 200 feet of beach. At this point in time, they're going to start pushing south now that they've constructed the full beach template, they'll start pushing south. Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Here we go, day four, so now the pipe is, is, is discharging to the south, they've got these, these construction dikes here, these temporary dikes, they push up to try to get the sand to run along the beach, to get more of the sand to fall out of suspension, and then they just continue to progress down the beach. Here's day six, day 20, day 21. So in terms of Southern Shores, what the contractor has identified to us is that the closest sub-line is going to come on shore in Kitty Hawk, around Station 10 Plus 00, so that's 1,000 feet south of the town line, it's about 300 feet north of Bird Street in Kitty Hawk, and then that, 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 what they will probably do is they'll, they'll construct that pad right here, and then the, the plan, as we understand it, is that, that they want to move north first and construct the northern part of Kitty Hawk, and then the Southern Shores Project, and then they'll flip that pipe and start moving south. So this is sort of just a schematic of what that would look like, it would come on shore there, they'd run laterally, and then once they get into where they're actually constructed, they usually split that into either two or three different lines, and they'll, they'll, they'll pump one load down at the water line, they'll pump one load up towards the dune, sometimes they've got three, and they'll pump in the middle. This is one of those surveyors I talked about, just measuring the, the constructed beach after it's, after it's constructed, they drag it, they grade it, make sure it's nice and smooth and clean, and then we'll go ahead and survey that in for pay. And then this is just a zoomed-in shot that shows that, that crab sitting, waiting to conduct one of those surveys out in the water. All right, so tentative schedule right now, just kind of a recap, the contract with CPNE was executed in January, the end of January, by the middle of March, we had submitted all of our permit applications, they were accepted by the state and the Corps. By May 9th, the Corps had issued its permit modification, two days later, the Division of Coastal Management issued their major permit for the Southern Shores Project. As I mentioned in those photos, the town of Duck Project started around May 24th. They anticipate starting the Kill Devil Hills Project really any day now, earlier in the week, they were saying they were going to dump their first load, probably tomorrow, I think that's been pushed back with some of the weather, they're probably looking at maybe their first load in Kill Devil Hills sometime on Thursday, but we're anticipating about a 40-day time period to build that Kill Devil Hills Project, which puts us right at the end of July or the first part of August, and then they've, they've told us that their plan after they finish Kill Devil Hills is to actually jump to the northern part of Kitty Hawk and work north into Southern Shore. So at this point in time, the tentative schedule is somewhere at the first or second week of August. If you guys have been following the project closely, you know, there tends to be some schedule swings from time to time. Originally, they were going to build the Kitty Hawk Project first, and about two weeks ago, they flipped that on us because of the dredge availability that they have, so best we can tell, sitting here on the 20th of June, we're looking at the first or second week of August, but, you know, certainly, that's a, that's a tentative schedule. So with that, be happy to take any questions from the board.
There seemed to be a pre-conference or pre-construction meeting on issue with the dikes, can you-
Sure, the permit, let's see if I can get back to that project, or that photo that showed it. The permit requires them to maintain these dikes, it specifically says temporary dikes will be, will be maintained, and the idea is that you're directing the flow along the shoreline, and you're trying to get some of that fine-grained material to settle out. Here, you can actually see in this photo that there is a, there is a little bit of a plume of, of turbid water here, cloudy water, there's, you know, 2% silt or so in that, that material, so some of that fine material is going to flow out offshore, and the agencies just want to make sure that the contractor is doing what they're supposed to do to kind of minimize that turbidity. Now, on a day like today, or a day like yesterday, I mean, you know, a mile offshore, all the way up and down the Outer Banks, the water looks like chocolate milk, it's all stirred up. So some of that is natural, but the, the contractor and the, and the, the Division of Coastal Management seem to be working their way into a better understanding of, you know, every, every beach fill is a little bit different, so they don't, they don't like to be locked into this requirement to build the dikes for the purpose of building the dikes. The sand is really high-quality, the grain size basically is allowing that sand to settle out, they're not over-pumping the slope, so there's not extra sand that's moving offshore, they're basically building the template, you know, pretty well right on track right now. So if they're building that template, they don't want to have to build these dikes and pump extra material out there that they're not going to get paid for, they want to make sure that all the sand they place falls in the template. So that's kind of the, the back and forth with the Division of Coastal Management, they feel like it's in the permit, so, you know, in order for them to say the contractor is, is complying with the permit, there has to be some effort made to funnel that material along shore, so they're, they're, they're basically just continuing to balance that, you know, the Division of Coastal Management's looking at our photos, looking at our daily reports to make sure that, you know, that the contractor is doing everything they can to comply with it, but that they're also, you know, able to build the project as fast as possible. So that's kind of the other side of that, the Division of Coastal Management wants them to build this project and get out of here as soon as possible, so if the dikes are slowing them down, they understand there's a little bit of give and take there.
That, that helps, because I, I heard that conversation earlier, too, with the DCM people, and I couldn't, I couldn't understand what, what their big concern was, you explained it with silt, this problem.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, Counsel?
So, we're going to be in August, so that we can do sand fencing immediately after, and I think we're planning to do that while we're here. What about the walkovers for our folks down there, are those going to be, when you put, start pushing sand, is that going to be an issue?
Yeah, because they're not building a dune, I don't think it's going to be, it, it hasn't been an issue even at the town of Duck, where they've, where they are building a pretty substantial dune, but, like, the, the steps in this picture, the steps in this picture, at the bottom of the step, I mean, the, the beach fill is probably going to tow in right around the bottom of those steps, so I don't think there's going to be much of an impact at all. There may be some down here that come out a little bit lower on the profile, that they're going to go ahead and, and they'll cover up those bottom few steps if it's below the six-foot contour, but thus far, we, we haven't seen any issues. I, I think, out of all the, you know, walkways up there, I mean, some of these walkways are pretty brittle, I think we've seen one cracked pair of steps out of all the steps that they've covered up so far, so they do a pretty good job, even with those big bulldozers, they do a really good job, but they've actually recently rented a small Bobcat to do some of the, you know, some of the finishing work around some of these more brittle walk, walkovers and things like that, but I, out of all the projects, I think this one's going to have the least concerns because that, they're, they're not pushing up a lot of sand up into the dune.
Are we going to have enough sand to accomplish what we want to accomplish? In other words, are we going to be able to essentially correct the problem and give us some, some life expectancy for that, for that oceanfront?
Sure, that's a good question. I mean, right now, balancing the numbers, we, we, we think that we're somewhere around 46, 47 cubic yards of linear foot, it certainly looks like it's going to fill that hole up that I talked about, that one profile, this one here, I mean, looking at the difference, looking at the difference between this red line and this blue line, I mean, this is, this is about the volume that you'd expect is going to equilibrate and move out, out here in the offshore profile, so I feel pretty good about the fact that, you know, we're going to, we're going to reestablish kind of that dry sand, that berm that was in place before the project, knowing that we're going to place some sand north of there, the taper goes, you know, 1,500 feet north of this station, so there's going to be some sand up there even further, and then some of the sand that you're going to naturally see spread off of that Kitty Hawk Project and spread into this area, you know, I, I, I certainly think that the money that's going to be spent is going to be, you know, is going to provide a, a benefit to this area, that it's going to slow that erosion down, and with the monitoring that we're proposing to do, you know, that's, that's the best you can do, you can put that sand out there, and we'll monitor, see if that hole develops further to the north, you know, if it's extending, or, or, you know, how this beach fill is holding up, but I certainly think that, that the sand that's going to be placed there is going to mitigate the issue up there, fill that hole in, and get you back to a, a good starting position where, you know, you no longer have that big offshore hole that's, that's pulling that sand off of the dune, chewing up the dune.
Sucking away from the beach. Thank you, Ken.
Hey, Ken, how much width will be increased on the beach from where it is now?
At construction, it's going to be somewhere between 60 and 80 feet after the construction, but you probably expect maybe 40% of that to pull back and fill in that offshore portion, so I would say, you know, the dry sand beach, you know, we'd expect maybe another 40 feet out there, 30 to 40 feet of dry sand beach, once the project is fully equilibrated.
Okay. But, but to be clear, and it's going to look like a lot initially.
Exactly.
And then what's going to happen is, we'll probably get comments back, which is, where is all the sand gone, right? I mean, just, and so, so that's built into your design-
Exactly.
-that you're going to lose a good half of that, but you're, you're losing it in a good way, you're losing it to, to make the system work better.
Correct, and, and, I mean, this is a good profile to show that, and it, it'll be interesting to see how that compares after, you know, six months of that fill sitting out there, if you can see that movement of that offshore portion of sand, but yeah, I mean, that, you know, when the, when the project goes in, everybody's eyes pop, and, you know, every time somebody sees you guys in the grocery store, they're going to pat you on the back and say how great it is, but that's the time to say, this is what it looks like at construction, we do expect some of that sand to move offshore, you know, it's, it's a little bit, you know, fooling to the eye to see it right after the contractors leave, because it is so big, but you expect a good chunk of that to move offshore, so, but yeah, it's, it's a good comment, for sure, something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it, Ken.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, one second, may I ask a question, thinking about-
Absolutely.
Ken, on the Counsel's agenda today is a proposal for the town to further regulate sand pushes, and I was wondering if you could pull that picture up again, that you had at Pelican Watch, and explain to the Counsel, in the profile that you explained a while ago, it's not going to create a berm, it's just going to be that profile flat out, is that right?
Correct.
And the concern that staff has is that there may be a tendency for property owners to throw their hands up three or four months from now and say, oh, I need a push, I need a push, and this, this is a publicly funded beach nourishment project, I was wondering if you could comment on that, even though it's on down the list on the-
Sure, no, I mean, my thought on that is that when, in order to, I mean, they've seen it up there already, that when they push that dune, you know, they're scraping the sand down here at the, at the mean water line to push that dry sand up, and all it takes is one more storm, and the water comes up to the base of the dune, and, you know, every wave that comes up is scraping away that sand that was placed there. To build this dry berm beach is basically pushing that water out further so that every one of those storms is not going to be lapping at the base of the dune, and so if you start going out there and scraping that sand that you all paid to put up there to rebuild the dune, you know, you're, you're, you're basically taking that protection away, you're lowering the profile so that now every time the water gets higher, it can come up over that berm and start scarping out that dune. So I think it's, 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 you know, the, the expectation of how long that sand stays in place and provides you that protection is probably better suited in that berm than it would be to just dump it all at the, at the base of the dune. You know, you, you should get more of a longevity of any sand that was placed in the dune, once that berm is there, so if, you know, individual property owners wanted to try to truck haul some sand out there to reestablish the dune, it probably has a better chance of staying in place once that berm is constructed, but I think it's good, I think it's, you know, good policy on the part of the town to keep people from going in there and scraping that sand that's going to extend the, the life of that dune and trying to put it up in the dune.
As opposed to if they, what they wanted, if they wanted to bring sand in from, from off-site, would that be detrimental as well, or not?
No, I think adding sand to the dune would, would, would be a good thing, it just, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to- It just, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to take the sand from that berm and push it up into the dune.
Understand that. But we wouldn't prevent them or forbid them from bringing sand from an outside source. Okay. Thank you, Ken.
Correct.
Thanks, Peter. Appreciate your time today, Ken.
Thanks, Ken.
Under new business council, I'll take these one at a time, amendments to town's noise ordinance, exception for the work associated with public beach nourishment projects, staff recommendation tab two in your book.
And Mr. Mayor, the planning department will be able to answer questions about the staff recommendations for these next two items.
Thank you. Anyone having questions about that particular ordinance? I think we all understand it. I think we understand the purpose of it, and I think we understand the reason for it. I need a motion to amend the town's noise ordinance to allow for this provision to be included. Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Sorry, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion is made and carried to accept the amendments to the town's noise ordinance, section 22-3. The second item for consideration is amendments to town's waterways and beaches ordinance, prohibition of bulldozing, pushing, or moving sand on town beaches. This is what Ken just talked about, that it's within limits of completed public beach nourishment project, staff recommendation, tab three. Do I have a motion to amend the town's waterways and beach ordinance?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
I have a second here from Mr. Nezen, also from Mr. Paul. Any discussion, council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject one more time, excuse me. Based on the comment about truck dumping from above, I'd like to see if y'all wanted to hear from the planning department about that and the way this is conformed. So I want to make sure this will allow that or when that can come up from dumping from above. Yes, please, because I'm not sure.
Yeah, Dan, do you want to address that question, just so we know?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this was drafted with that in mind. I just want to make sure.
Sure. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Yes, the ordinance as presented would prohibit the beach bulldozing, which as Ken described would be from a mechanical source and pushing the sand from the wet sand beach, you know, the dry sand beach area up. This would not prohibit, this ordinance, if adopted, would not prohibit the sand import process, which would be on a case-by-case, dependent upon what activity was taking place as far as any erosion or any other activities such as overtopping of sand onto the private property on the landward side of the dune, where we would meet with the staff of Division of Coastal Management, and we would discuss the proper activity that would need to take place for that type of dune stabilization. So we would still have the means to be able to meet with DCM, discuss what corrective measures need to take place, and then properly permit.
This wouldn't prevent imports?
That's correct.
They'd have to go through you to be permitted anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
You would have to establish a permit?
Yes, sir. It would.
Wouldn't that be after discussion with DCM?
That is correct. There are several variables that would need to be taken into account, the time of year, which if it's during the moratorium season and bringing in, you know, the approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. It would be the volume of sand, the type of sand for the sand import, meeting that three-to-one slope or whatever slope would be necessary. And really, it would depend on the nature of the request and what kind of correction is being requested.
And you would monitor the quality of sand being brought in?
Yes, sir. It would be monitored very strictly. The equipment, if a sand import permit were issued, we would have to approve their access onto the beach, the location onto the beach. It would be strictly monitored with staff there watching to make sure that no blade is dropped onto the beach and pushed. It could still be maintained and the activity could still go forward with mechanical devices. It's, as Ken described, it's dropping that blade onto the beach is what would be prohibited under the ordinance and if you choose to adopt.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Have a motion to approve amendment to the town waterways and beach ordinance in this new section, prohibition of bulldozing, pushing, moving sand on town beaches. Motion's been made and motion's been seconded. We've had a discussion about it, had some questions answered. All in favor of passing the amendment?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Motion's made and carried, I believe. Go ahead.
Just flipping through these, I noticed that Article 3, the title on both of them, I think when they were putting them together, they may have pulled them, had them together at one point and separated, but you might want to make a motion or just consensus that the Article 3 in both of them be properly worded to associate with the ordinance that's being changed. Article 3 right now reads amendment of noise ordinance in beach and period in both of them. And I think in one of them, it means it's meant to be amendment of noise ordinance, and in the other, it's probably meant to be amendment of beach and waterways ordinance. So you may want to do that by consensus or by motion.
That needs to be corrected.
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Article 3 should be corrected on both of them. Whoever would do that, the staff level, whether it be.
It'll be fixed, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we've taken care of that. Jim, on public comment? It's open again. I think we have one person at least. Thank you, Bonnie. Al, you're early. Morning, Al.
Good morning, Councilman. There's something real quick. A number of people have noticed, including myself, the, our new intersection of East Ogwood and 12. And the way they, I know it's been called, and I've looked a few things, the collection area or whatever for residents, where they put up the polling to go around on the southwest corner of the intersection, has possibly, possibly, I'm not an engineer and I know things look good on paper, that turn to make a right-hand turn coming out of East Ogwood to head south on 12 with those poles there has created a really tight turn. And some, a car sitting in that left-hand turn lane, it is very, very tight and very close, and feeling that, you know, there's going to be a clip of one another there. If that light is green for the people coming out of East Ogwood, and you've got some of these guys coming down there with a little bit of speed, they can't make that turn without going into that left-hand turn lane area. And also, excuse me, two people brought up to me the fact that if there's a possibility of, say, the contractors, landscapers dragging trailers, if they were to go around that corner that way and possibly hook one or two of those poles, and they snap back and clip a couple pedestrians waiting for that light to turn, that could create, the way it is right now, maybe somebody should turn around and do a little observation there and take a look for a little bit and see, that could be, wind up being a dangerous intersection now the way it was put in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. This time, I'll close public comment. Just got a couple things under Mayor's comments. I think all of you received an invitation from Jennifer Abeniz with the ICO to attend their annual meeting. Apparently, this meeting is going to be on the Wednesday, June the 28th at 11:30 at the Ramada Plaza Nags Head, 7001 Virginia Dare Trail, inviting all, any of us who wish to attend to attend their 12th Annual Volunteer Donor Appreciation Luncheon and their 2017 Annual Meeting on Wednesday, June 28th. If you wish to attend that, council, please give Jennifer a call and make reservations. They'll serve us lunch and let us listen to the annual meeting agenda. Nice letter from Gray Berryman from Cub Scout PAC 117 thanking council, which I think most of you have seen, thanking council, our town manager and our fire chief for, and included our police chief for their support in the Soapbox Derby this year. And that's been a good event now, and it's getting more and more popular. And that's all I have, council. Let's start with Mr. Newberry, if he has any comments.
Yeah, I have one. I've had several residents contact me about the intersection at 12 and East Ogwood, the construction site. Understand that the sand fences have to stay up until vegetation or the grass starts growing, but they're wanting to know what else is going to be done to landscape that area because it's not that attractive right now. And it'd probably be a good idea in the newsletter to inform people of what your plans are.
Is that it?
That's it.
I addressed this in the last meeting, Fred. I pointed out very carefully that I'd be consulting with staff and local professionals to help us with the design for that and some planning, some screening, lots of things on the table, wildfire mixes, trees, shrubs. We haven't decided what we're going to do with it. I'm also being consulted with the neighbors that are impacted directly, and I have had conversations with at least one of those people. Will be addressed at the staff level with as much help as they need to have.
Okay. Why can't you just give a little brief summary in the newsletter?
Until we decide what would be the most efficient thing to do there and the most effective thing, we'd like to wait and get our ducks in a row before we make an announcement. We've already announced that we're going to do it in a public setting. I said that. You can just relay that to the people who are talking to you about the fact that it's not as attractive as it should be right now.
Okay, I'm not talking about just the people that are talking to me, I'm talking about the whole town.
Yeah. Well, the feedback I'm getting is just no issues. So you're hearing from a little different group of people than I'm hearing from them. Maybe they don't want to hurt my feelings, but they're not complaining about it.
Okay.
They understand it's not going to happen immediately. There's a time for planning and a time not, and now is not the best time to plant anything. So we're looking at the fall planting season.
Maybe that's all we need to say is.
Maybe so.
I think it's reasonable to just say something like a sentence that.
Yeah, but when you have a major project like that, and people may agree that it solved the problem, but now they say they have an unattractive construction site, you need to calm that discussion. And you can do that by putting your plans in a newsletter and saying, hey, it's not a proper time to plant, but in the fall, this is what we plan to do. It's a very simple thing. It's just a matter of communication.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Leo?
I've not really had anything, Chris, other than the fact that I heard this one in our county, commissioners passed their budget for all experience of force in Jackson Beach this year.
That's good news.
It was a five, two votes, two voting, did not vote for it. Heard that's more.
Thank you. Gary?
Yeah, I'd like to, now that we're through our budget process, I introduced this earlier, as well as heading into summer, I wanted to make a motion that we, with the exception of the meeting on the 11th, that we would suspend the mid-month meetings until such a time as we need them. And if we need them, we'll call for a public hearing and we can add them back at any time. For a meeting. We can add them back at any time as needed. Something comes up that we have to do it, we'll do it.
Does that have a motion?
It is a motion.
We have a second. A motion to drop the mid-month meeting, except as needed basis. I would add, this is a comment, the way we handled a mid-month meeting for years was that the mayor and town manager would consult and decide whether there's enough business to be done for a mid-month meeting. So we go back to that format basis, unless somebody else has an urgent item they wish to have us discuss.
And other council members may have a reason for it. And so I think that's something we would just bring up on a case-by-case basis and we can add it.
Have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion's made and carried to have only one meeting a month until further notice. Gary?
Close session.
We can do that. Counsel, this time I would ask we go into closed session. I don't know what's under the general statute, 143-318-11A6, consider a personnel matter regarding individual officer, employee of the town. Thank you.